Absolutely. Mrs. Ekman?
Here.
Mr. Sergini, absent. Mr. Duffy?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mrs. Zimmerman?
Here.
Okay, before our meeting this evening, the board held our executive session where we discussed legal personnel and one real estate matter. And I would like to make an announcement to welcome our esteemed Weebloes from PAC 267. They're here working on their citizen badge. So hopefully we give you a good meeting and you learn a lot. So thank you for coming. All right, with that, we'll move on to item one. That would be the consent agenda. And there's minutes in the treasurer's report included in that consent agenda. With that, would one of the board members like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Patrick. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any questions on the motion? Questions from the audience on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carried. Okay, item two this evening will be new business. Two A is a discussion and consideration of McDonald's land development and possible waiver requests, and I believe-
Good evening, Carl Weener, representing McDonald's.
Good evening.
This project involves basically rebuild, tear down and rebuild of existing McDonald's at Trooper Road and Shenondale Boulevard. It will involve interior and exterior remodeling of the building. There's actually no change to the building footprint itself. The only modification to the exterior will be a change to the drive-through access lane and a modification of the ADA access for the building. We were in front of the planning commission a couple of weeks ago. They took the position that because of the limited scope of the project, that it really was not a land development, and that was their recommendation. We agree that it's a limited scope to this project, and we certainly would be happy to accept a land development waiver. But the reality is, we have submitted a land development application. We've submitted a plan. We're prepared to proceed with land development. We're really, it's at the discretion of the board as to how you wish to proceed on that issue.
Carl, did you say that it was a complete tear down of the building?
Yes. I'm sorry.
It's just a remodel.
Remodel, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
It is not a tear down. I'm sorry. Yes. So it is somewhat limited in scope, but again, we're prepared to do what the board sees fit.
Yeah, Carl, there's several review letters in here.
Yes.
So I assume you folks have all been through the review letters?
We reviewed, we have them, we're prepared to respond to those.
McMahon, there's a Cametta. It looks like lighting's not an issue according to the review. And the county, you know, raised a couple of issues. So I think, I guess, the board needs to know what they can comply with, what they can't comply with, and whether it's a waiver with conditions attached to it, or whether you, since you filed the land development plan, it's a preliminary final.
Right.
You know, you're probably going to get to the same spot.
Okay. Well, why don't we go through that process? And I guess first, to give you a little bit of an overview as to what we're doing here, we have Anthony Capenigro here from Bowler Engineering to give you an overview of our proposal.
Thank you. Again, my name's Anthony Capenigro with Bowler Engineering. I represent McDonald's for this, thank you, for this remodel project. So again, as Carl mentioned, the existing footprint of the building is not changing. So what McDonald's is going to do is a remodel to the exterior facades of the building to upgrade the facades from the classical McDonald's mansion roof look. And I have another slide here that shows the elevations. We can show that next. And then also interior to the building, they'll do some refresh as well to the interior. On the outside of the building, there's an existing playland that will be removed with this remodel and just left open for more of a outdoor seating area, you know, for seasonal use. But that playland that you see when you're driving along Trooper Road there, is the first thing you see, will be gone. And it will just be the facades of the building, which you'll see on the next slide. On the site of the building here today, they have a single order point drive-through configuration, which sometimes causes delays in some of the stacking of the drive-through and creates stacking of the site kind of through this area to the front of the building during their peak hours, morning, noon, and dinner times. What this proposal is, is to do a side-by-side configuration, which really improves the stacking situation in this area. So instead of stacking along the site and into the front of the building, there's a lot more space in here for stacking of vehicles between the order points and the pickup windows and the pay window. A lot of the delays that take place with the drive-through are due to the preparation of the food and the payment of the food, so this provides a lot more stacking area for the drive-through customers. And it really gets the stacking of the vehicles in this area rather than on-site. So as mentioned, we did receive some review letters. And I do have, yeah. And I do have responses prepared that we can go through to the executive summary that was prepared for the board supervisors. So in the executive summary, it was really a summary of all the review letters and the issues that were raised. And the first comment that was mentioned in the summary has to do with signage restrictions going on to Shenondale Boulevard. Can you zoom out slightly on that exhibit, please? Zoom out, not out. Yeah, further, there you go. Continue. No, no, keep going. Yeah, keep coming out. Yeah, there you go, make it smaller. Great, that should be fine. So the traffic engineer letter from McMahon, and then also some of the comments from the township staff, mentioned some concerns that the township has with the function of the McDonald's access drives in relation to this internal access drive that serves the numerous uses within the center. And as you can see here, this line is the McDonald's lease area. This black line going around the perimeter of the McDonald's. So any improvements outside of that lease area would need consent and approval from the landlord of this overall center. So some of the comments and concerns that were raised by the township engineer had to do with some of the functionality of this access drive and also this access drive due to some clear sight issues. And we are working with the landlord to try to address some of those issues that he see, that the township raised in regards to opening up, you know, the clear sight area here. Unfortunately, with the transformer that provides electric service to the building, it's going to be tough to provide any type of, you know, improvements to that area without really relocating this, because this transformer, I believe, does serve, you know, potentially another use. So there are some improvements along this access drive that we're going to work through with the landlord and try to work with the township engineer as a condition to try to make sure that, you know, we can either address or come to some agreement with the township engineer that addresses his concerns. In regards to permits, you know, we'll obtain all the permits necessary for the project. Going through the comments from the consultants, the county raised, the first comment in the summary is in regards to the county planners' comment to really create some type of stormwater BNP in this center drive-through island. It's not really a practical solution for stormwater, and, you know, the one benefit with this project is that we are increasing green area with the site improvements here. So there will be a reduction of stormwater runoff from the lease area of the McDonald's. There's an inlet located right here on the site that everything really kind of bowls to and she flows to. It's really not going to be a very practical solution to kind of try to buckgrade, to force water into this drive-through island. On top of that, there's some drive-through equipment in this area, wiring and such, that really won't make this a very, you know, ideal place for water BNP. Again, I think the water improvements being proposed by the reduction in the previous coverage should be adequate to address any concerns with stormwater on this site. The next comment has to do with, again, comments in regards to the driveways exiting the McDonald's site onto this rear access drive. Again, there were some comments about installing stop signs here at this point, which, again, in the lease area, we could certainly install a stop sign here. And also, coming out of the drive-through, there was a recommendation to install a stop sign as well to, you know, alert the people exiting the drive-through that they should, you know, really stop and make sure that they have a clear path before moving. So we have no issue to applying those traffic features within the lease area. The loading operations for the McDonald's are going to be consistent with today. I do have a rendering with me in the back where an exhibit that I can show if needed, but the truck today comes into the site, he unloads and loads in this area, and he leaves the site. There will be no change to that operation. The drive-through is not going to impact that. We have the center island here, but again, the truck has ample room to stage in the area he needs to stage and exit the site accordingly, as he does today. Loading and unloading is during off-peak hours, so the idea is that it will not impact the peak hours of the drive-through operation during McDonald's highest hours of operation here. So again, number five on the summary has to do with additional signage within this area and pavement markings within this area. The landscape review requested some tree protection throughout the site and also some tree replacements. We have no issue complying with the township landscaper's requirements. And also to provide some plannings or a plan that shows plannings for the island in the middle here. And then going down into the planning director comments, again, he, you know, we're here before you, before the board to request either the waiver or conditions with the waiver, and then we can kind of go on from there. So really, the main items within this letter that are still open for discussion with the landlord are the improvements that we can do outside of the McDonald's lease area to address some of the concerns raised by the township traffic engineer.
What's the existing condition? How many, what's your stacking number for cars out there in the current condition?
Do you have a go through the aerial, actually? So this is the aerial of the site as it is today. And again, your order point is in this area. So you only have about three cars to stack from the menu board to the pay window, and then all your other cars will have to stack on-site. So from the order point to the pay window, in the existing condition, it's only about two to three cars. In the proposed condition, if you can flip back to the site plan again, these are the order points here. And there's an order point here and here, so there's, you know, unfortunately, I don't have the car shown on here. It's a mistake on my end, I should have had the car shown. But you can fit at least five to six cars from the order points to this pay window, which is at this location. And then this allows for, you know, another car or so before you get to the menu boards to stack within a drive-through dedicated area.
And that angle parking is existing?
The angle parking at this lower end? It is, yes. And the angle parking today has that same aisle width from the existing drive-through lane. So this aisle width that bypasses the drive-through is the same width as it is in the existing condition.
But it's two ways?
It's not two ways. This is a one-way aisle in the existing condition today.
Is that right?
That is.
Oh, okay.
If you're on-site here, there's an arrow, which is a little dull, that is a right turn only.
I've probably driven the wrong way. Okay, board members have any other questions?
Can we see the exterior view?
Yes.
Building elevations.
So as you can see, at the top left is the existing view of the building, really from your prime view shed from Trooper Road as you're coming into the center. And then that's going to be replaced with this view shed. Color scheme, you know, this is the generic look. The operator may change some of the color schemes on the building, but this is the template that you would see for the new remodel look. And again, same footprint, what they do is just skin the building, take the roof off, skin the building, take the roof off, and then replace it with the upgraded finishes of the new McDonald's look here. So again, this playland that you really see as a feature of the building will no longer be there. You'll see a more modernized McDonald's looking building at the corner.
Are you requesting any waivers?
We are not.
Yes, Richard.
Maybe I missed, but the chief had recommended a no-left turn sign. Did you address that?
Sure. Could you go back to the site plan, please? So can you kind of scroll a little down on the plan so we can get that, no, the other way? There you go, that's good. So the chief's concern was, as you exit the McDonald's at this location, to get into this staging area, that this movement is not permitted for this car to come out and get into this staging lane.
Isn't it supposed to be one way, though?
I'm sorry?
Isn't that one way going the other way?
Just to get past the building.
This access drive, once you get past the building, so if you're in the drive-through, you are able to go this way.
Okay.
So this is a full access, but once you get to this point, it's one way.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So the chief's recommendation was to put some type of no-left turn signal here or sign here to really deter people from trying to enter into this short staging area in order to kind of continue making a left towards the light. So, you know, experience and discussions with the owner, you know, there's not that much of a concern from a McDonald's standpoint. They don't see a lot of traffic backing up in this area. And again, to the chief's point, it's more of an on-site issue that McDonald's and the landlord should really work out and see if there's any type of way they can improve that situation. And we're looking to do that, and we're looking to work through that with the landlord, and we will report to the township engineer to let him know what the solution could potentially be here. Because his potential solution was to no-left turn and require the exit customer to circle the center to go at the top of, I guess they call it Shenondale Boulevard.
Couldn't they go around the building again? Watch the back?
No, they can do that too, sorry. But again, that kind of brings back to the point of doing something in this area, because now there were some concerns about this clear sight triangle area. So we're really going to work with the landlord to try to figure out the best solution in this travel way to address any concerns that the township has and also that, just safety concerns that may exist out there that we can work with the township engineer on.
Okay. So you report back to us on that?
Do you want us to report back to you, or can we work through this with the township engineer?
I think you work through it with township engineer.
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
So this was filed as a minor land development, August 29th. And there's a lot of issues I just heard that you're going to work through with the traffic engineer. There's some signage. Looking at McMahon's review letter, there's multiple recommendations. The plans haven't been revised since they were initially filed, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, I mean, it's, I think the consensus, what I heard even at the planning commission and with the board is, this is a minor subdivision plan. You've got to resolve issues with the other consultants. Tom Cametta has some comments too regarding planting and-
And that's, again, that's-
Type of species, and he had some comments on the island, what to do with that, whether-
We can put some plannings in there as well, exactly, so.
Right, but you don't want to do a stormwater facility in there. You don't think you're going to be able to do that?
Yeah, I think that would just, it's an unpractical, I don't think it's practical just based off the way the site naturally drains today to this inlet that's located south of the property, so. And again, with the equipment that goes on in this area and also the additional plannings, the one thing I don't like to do, and you can correct me if, you know, you feel differently, but to create some depressed curbs in this drive-through island that when your car comes around with, you know, whether it's a minivan or a car, and you have a depressed curb that he can potentially ramp up as you're getting close to the speaker post. I really don't want to have depressed curbs in this island. It's not something McDonald's likes to see. Like you said, next thing you know, you have a car ramped up into the island now because they missed a depressed curb area or whatever it may be that kind of would cause a traffic concern. And we really want the customers to get close and comfortable to the speaker post, to see the menu board, to relay the order without worrying about the press curbs or maybe, you know, any kind of maybe rock filter that may pour into the drive-through lane. So everything she flows naturally to this area. And again, we're going to be reducing those flows and improving some of the water quality by the green area and also providing some additional trees that he's asking for to kind of cool the water down and make it, you know, it's going to be BNP improved with those features, so.
I mean, procedurally, I think where we are is, you've got a pending land development plan. The planning commission has done their review. And you need to resubmit revised plans with all these issues once they've been resolved, and it would come back to this board for an approval.
Okay, so you want to, I guess, have us come back, then?
Yeah, I mean-
Okay, that's fine.
I don't know how they can vote on a set of plans that, you know, without saying, going through here and saying you're complying with this, or you might comply with that, or, you know, I think you need to put on that revised set of plans as much of this that you're able to do, and consultants are going to have to look at it and report back to the board. I mean, they can't just approve something without knowing what they're approving, because the August 29th plans aren't going to be the plans that get approved. But it's a, you know, it's just doing that, coming back to this board for an approval.
So revision-
One way or the other, so we will be an improvement in conditions, the traffic flow, what's there now. We still know we can, you know, respond to everything that was raised, particularly by McMahon, but because we're dealing with another, with a third party, there's the landlord, and that's land that he controls. But we will certainly provide, you know, some of those items on there and certainly approve what's there now.
Well, yeah, McMahon's not here tonight, so to address these, but it seems to me there's a lot of signage issues, and you're dealing with landlord that owns the land all around you, I guess, right? But there's truck turning templates, there's, you know, there's a fair amount of additional information that ought to be put on the plans. I just think it's-
That's fine, we were hoping for a conditional approval that we can work through these conditions with the township engineer due to the minor nature of the plan without needing to come back.
If I knew what was on the plans and I had the time to prepare an approval resolution, you know, but there will be a written approval resolution. That's why we need, I can't do an approval resolution without knowing what those next set of plans are and what conditions you either will comply with or won't comply with.
Sure.
You know, it's, you don't get a general approval resolution. If it's not specific enough, Carl will have a heart attack. And-
I'll live with it.
I mean, it's got to be specific, right? You've got to have all the conditions in there, and if there's things that aren't required for the code, you know. So that's, just so we get it all well documented. But there's enough, there's enough comments in here. You didn't address all the comments in your letter that were in all the review letters. There's some other things in here that seem to me to be clarified.
Sure.
For the board has a comfort level. So, you know, you're looking at another month or so, probably. If you really get it cleaned up, maybe the next meeting, which is in two weeks. But I need time to do the approval resolution, and the consultants need time to comment on whatever the current set of plans are. Is there any time issues, Mike, on this?
No, we have been granted a waiver.
Okay.
If I could speak, I'm Sean Logan, I'm with McDonald's. I'm a little surprised that you need it completely cleaned up, because quite frankly, I've done 85 or 90 remodels, and it's pretty minor nature. We've been granted preliminary final or even a waiver, as, you know, as the planning commission requested or recommended, and just conditions were attached that we would address the comments within the review letters. So I'm a little surprised at that. And as you noted, we submitted in August. We're in the first meeting in December, and we're just getting here. So we're anxious to get started as soon as the weather breaks. I know you're saying we can meet in two weeks, but a lot of McMahon's comments involve portions of the site that are not part of our lease area. So getting the landlord of the overall shopping center to agree to any of that is very much out of our hands. We will reach out to them. You know, we typically have to reach out to them for signatures, signature applications and that sort of thing, but, you know, we've agreed, and Anthony has noted, we're compliant with, or we're willing to comply with every comment that's been issued, with the exception of stormwater within that landscape area because of our drive-through facilities, and any of those traffic comments that are outside of our lease area. I mean, it just seemed very minor. I'm surprised that we need to come back, have Carl come back, our engineer come back. Dollars are going to be spent on the remodel that includes beautifying the building, addressing capacity concerns, and bringing the entire site into ADA compliance of this thing. I'm surprised, myself. I want to be on that.
Noted. But there's a lot of comments on here that are not on your plans. There's no way to form a motion or have a resolution done on the spot based on what's here.
Well, we need to be on the spot. It's a vote, is it not a vote?
No, it's got to be a written decision.
Sure, the written decision is based upon what was discussed this evening, conditioned upon?
It's too vague. It's not specific. Pennsylvania requires a specific written decision on what is approved and what the specific conditions are.
Okay.
This is too, you know, there's things that are up in the air.
No, I understand, but the plans haven't changed since August. We were waiting for the review letters, so they're not going to be carried based on the review letters. They were just issued, and we're just meeting with you this evening for the first time.
Right, this is your first time in front of this board.
Okay.
So this is their first shot at it, and, you know, usually it takes a couple of times in front of the board it actually makes a decision. I mean, none of us have any way of knowing walking in here what the board would want to attach as conditions until they hear from you. And then they can't vote on a plan without it being documented. So you're going to lose a little bit of time, but let's get it right.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have item 2B, and that's a discussion and consideration of a waiver request for fence installation at 2854 Egypt Road. And Mike, you have the info on this one?
Yes, thank you, I do. Just the Barton residence here on Egypt Road is pictured here. What they are proposing to do is to fence in the yard. What the board is being asked to consider is a waiver from Chapter 81, which is our standalone fence ordinance, as you know. The applicant wants to have a solid fence in the front yard, which is not allowed, and so they are asking for a waiver to be allowed to do that. Let me, I'll just run you briefly through my understanding of what they want to do. The, thank you. The site plan here, if you see, this is the front of the house, Egypt Road's down here at the bottom. They're going to do post and rail back through here, which is fine. They have two dogs, some small kids, and they also are concerned about deer, that because they adjoin an open space here with the county property, they have a significant problem with deer incidents with cars here on, down here on Egypt Road. And so that's why they have obtained permission to extend a fence from the side of the house to connect to the post- to connect to the post and rail fence in a similar style to the county fence. And I believe that's provided in your, the documentation is, is provided in your packet. Again, what we are discussing tonight is just a solid fence, which would go basically from the side, from the side of the house here, forward, inside of the one tree, and then across the front, back around another tree, and back, back towards the rear of the house, and then adjoining with the post and rail fence, which would go sideways. If you could show the next slide. The solid fence would be something similar to this with the waving thing. It's decorative, but it is solid. Our, as you probably know, the ordinance requires an open-style fence in any front yards. And that's, that's primarily why we held up on approving the permit, and why they are asking the board's consideration this evening.
And Mike, just to be clear, so that there, isn't there a height restriction for fences in the front yard as well? Did you say that?
Uh, yes, there is. The height restriction in the front yard would be five feet, as opposed to eight feet in the side and rear.
And what they're proposing is...
Would be five feet, would be compliant, yeah.
Okay, so it's just the opaqueness, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, Joel.
Can you...
And the property owner's not here, Mike?
No, they are not.
Okay.
Did you tell them they didn't have to be here, or how did that happen?
Uh, yes, that's true.
Okay, you did tell them?
I did, yes.
Did you have a question, Don?
Well, I'm looking at the picture you have, the first one, it's down Egypt Road, there's a large tree in the front yard. Where's that tree in reference to where they want to put the fence?
Can, can you go back to the, the, there you go. The, the fence would come this way with, it's hard to do this in a three-dimensional way, but this tree would be outside of the fenced area, so, and then this tree, I believe it is, would be, would be encompassed by the fence. If you go back to the site thing.
And they want a solid fence all the way across the front?
Yes, so, again, it's coming down this way with the tree on the outside, on the driveway side, outside the fenced area, across the tree on the inside here, the second tree.
And they do note in their email that they're having some issues with trespassers and strange people on their porch hanging out.
That would, that would be relieved by whether they put up a fence that complied with the ordinance or not. This is really to keep their dogs inside, so their small dog doesn't get out. Right? Whether you had, whether you had a fence that complied with the ordinance, or didn't comply with the ordinance, that would solve the trespasser problem.
Yeah, I think you might be right, Patrick. I mean, the property owner does note that he doesn't want a fence where somebody could put their foot on a lower rail and kind of hop over. But if they have post and rail, pretty much right adjacent, if someone wants to get over the fence, you just go another 10 feet around the corner and hop that piece. So, you're probably right. And I assume they'll probably have some sort of chicken wire fencing then in between the post and rail, so that the dogs do stay in.
That's right there. They say that all the fence, and I believe that includes the solid fence, would have a, the wire match on the backside.
Oh, even, even the solid?
I believe so.
Okay. Any other questions? What's the board's pleasure with this waiver request?
Because I'd sort of like to hear from the Barton's.
The property owner?
Yes. A better understanding of exactly what they're looking for, and why they can't comply with the ordinance now.
I don't know, I think he's, you know, he's written down his, in his memo, he's pretty much stated. It's probably the same thing we're going to hear, if they were present or not.
It is very detailed.
I certainly am happy that the Barton's actually are coming in for a fence permit, because that's always quite a, quite a battle, to get residents to come in to at least do that part. So, I don't know. I'm okay with granting the waiver, if anybody else wants to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to grant the waiver request for the fence.
Okay, thank you, Joel. If you make a motion, I'll, I will second it, unless somebody else wants to second it. Okay, no, I'm sorry, I'll be the second on that, Deb. All right, well, any questions on the motion? Questions from the audience on this motion, granting the waiver for the fence? Did you want that on the record, Mr. Bora?
Sure.
Your thumbs down, did you want that on the record?
I'm sure.
Oh, okay.
I'm sure.
Okay. There's no questions from the audience, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor granting the waiver, consent by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carried. All right. Item 2C, approval of our 2015 equipment rental agreement. And John, oh, John.
Yes, thank you.
This is John, sorry.
John Prentis.
You sleepin'?
Thank you.
I was ready to take it.
As the board knows, each year, the township enters into an agreement for equipment rental to, for, to a contractor to assist us in snowstorms and some paving work in the summertime. We reached out to three contractors for quotes on equipment. We received one back from James R. Kenny, excavating and paving. They currently have the 2014 rental agreement. We're very happy with this contractor. He's also in the township, and when we need him, he's right there with one phone call. Also, his prices are going to stay the same for 2015 as they are in 2014. Mr. Rice has looked at the agreement, and everything seems to be in order. It's my recommendation that the township accept a quote from James R. Kenny, excavating and paving, for the 2015 equipment rental.
Okay. All right, so with that recommendation, we have a motion to accept that?
Make a motion to accept that.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Questions from board members on the motion? Any questions from the audience on the equipment contract? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, and the motion carries. Okay. Item 2D, discussion and consideration of building inspection service agreement. And Rich, you have that floor for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairwoman. LTL has been providing this ser, building inspection services for the township at a current hourly charge of $66.75 an hour. They provide two inspectors. They have been providing one commercial building inspector, who's also certified in residential inspection on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and they have been providing a residential inspector on Tuesday and Thursdays. That recently changed with the certifications that the residential building inspector was able to acquire, and he became a commercial and a residential building inspector within the last few weeks. As part of our budgetary process, we looked at whether or not we could acquire, whether we had cost-effective building inspection services. And in the fall of 2014, LTL requested an hourly increase of $2 an hour to $68.75 an hour. As a result of our budgetary discussions, I contacted three firms to see whether or not we did have cost-effective services. LTL was one of those firms, Code Inspection Services was one of those firms, and Keystone Municipal Services was one of those firms that was contacted. Did an analysis of all three, and basically, Code Inspection Services offers the most cost-effective services at $61 an hour, versus the LTL quote of $68.75 an hour, versus this Keystone quote at $65 an hour. Code Inspections has fully certified commercial and residential building inspectors available five days a week. They have 25 inspectors that are so certified, so they have a deep bench that LTL doesn't have. So, in the event that there were any transition employees, we wouldn't have a problem in terms of keeping our residential and commercial building inspector onsite, five days a week, available to the public. Also, I think that Code Inspection during our interview of them indicated to us that, that we're going to be more aggressive in terms of eliminating the backlog of permits that we have. So I think that, given the, given their cost quote, given their deep bench of inspectors, and given the recommendations that I got from surrounding municipalities, I would recommend that we execute Code Inspection Services contract going forward, starting next week, with our services, with an interim period with LTL, and Code Inspections, possibly about a week. If you've got any additional questions, I'm available to answer those additional questions. And we've got Mr. Hile, Bob Hile is here tonight, from Code Inspections, Inc.
And Rich, and you've worked with Code Inspections before in other municipalities?
I worked with Code Inspection several years ago during the building boom, when I was at Upper Magfield Township for a series of years. Code Inspections did a very good job for us. I can't really remember any complaints about Code Inspection Services during that period of time. And during that period of time, we had Toll, we had Hopnanian, we had Pulte, all building during the building boom, along with a whole host of mid-level developers.
Okay, thank you, Rich. I know you did a lot of work gathering this information and interviewing the three. We appreciate that, and we hear your recommendation to go with Code Inspector, Code Inspections Incorporated. So...
Rich, will you have control over the staff that Code Inspector sends to us?
Yes, in fact, well, we'll have limited control over the staff that they send to us, but if we need to change out an individual, Code Inspections has already indicated and already done, in fact, rotation course on the staff.
Okay. Would a board member like to entertain a motion that we accept Rich's recommendation to go with Code Inspections contract for 2015 building inspection services?
I would make that motion.
Okay, Patrick.
No.
Thank you, Don. Motion is second. Any questions from board members? Questions on the audi, from the audience on this contract? Okay, hearing none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, and motion carried. Item 2E, authorization to post Act 44 disclosure forms on the township website. Andrew?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Act 44 requires that any entity that is compensated through a municipal pension plan on an annual basis, complete a financial disclosure form. What that is meant to do is prevent any conflict of interest, because the forms require that any financial donations or transactions between those entities, basically our consultants, be listed, whether it be a political contribution, hiring a family member, et cetera. Based upon that basic criteria, two firms need to complete that. Municipal Finance Partners, the township's actuarial firm for the pension plans, and our new pension plan administrator, INR Services. They are completed. The board has been copied on those documents in their packets. At this point, I'm requesting authorization to post those forms on the township website, so they're viewable by anyone.
Okay, thank you, Jerry. All right. We have a motion to allow Jerry to post that Act 44 forms on the website.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, we have a second?
Aye.
Motion is second. We have any questions from board members on that? Questions from the audience? Hearing none, call for the vote. All those in favor, consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, ayes have it. Item 3, old business. Oh, discussion of residential trash and recycling bin. Welcome, Mr. Woodrow.
Good evening, thank you. On Tuesday morning, we opened bids for our trash hauling contract going forward after March of this year. We had six potential bidders appear at our pre-bid meeting, including some of the larger trash haulers in the area. On Tuesday morning, however, we only received two bids, one from JP Moscara, and one from Advanced Disposal. I did have some conversations with two of the other bidders. One of them suggested they recently had won contracts in Delaware County, and was concerned that their fleet would not be able to suitably handle a large account like Lower Providence, so they chose not to bid. I did speak to the folks at Waste Management anecdotally, and suggested that they just didn't feel they could be competitive in this area. They are focusing more on the lower Bucks County area these days evidently, and didn't feel they could be competitive in Lower Providence. So with that being said, we did open the two bids that we received, and the low bidding contractor certainly appears to be JP Moscara. At your place this evening, I put up a packet of documents. The cover page is kind of a summary of the bid forms, but recall in the bid specs, we had nine different bid categories that we asked the contractors to consider. Basically, the first four contracts are ones that we're kind of familiar with. The one would be a three-year contract for once-a-week pickup, a five-year contract for once-a-week pickup, and then a three-year contract for twice-a-week, or a five-year contract with twice-a-week. Then we had some hybrids. We talked about a volume control component, where we would define all trash being inserted into a container, and that would be the only volume of trash that a resident could put out at the curb, hoping that that might give us some better pricing if the trash hauler knew they had a specific volume to dispose of. We got some numbers for electronic waste disposal, and then we looked at a one-year contract. If in the event we had some issues with the bidding process, and wanted to make sure that we didn't interrupt service to residents, we had a one-year proposal. Interestingly enough, the prices proposed by Moscara are actually lower than what we're paying today. Today, for a twice-a-week pickup with full yard waste, bulk waste, recycling, we're paying about $400 a... paying about $400 a year per household. For that same twice-a-week pickup, in a three-year contract, Mascara is proposing $342 a year or a five-year contract at $357 a year. So it's even savings over what, what we're seeing today. At the bottom of that page that I handed out, I included one more kind of breakdown. In the bid packet, we had additional option, two additional option years that we could potentially award in addition to the base contract. So at the bottom, the three-year contract essentially becomes a five-year contract, and the five-year contract essentially becomes a seven-year contract. And again, still pretty good savings over that which we were paying today. I did ask Mascara why they were able to provide us with better pricing, and they said the reasons were numerous. One is that the economy being weak, they need to be more competitive in their minds in pricing for the, for the services. Disposal costs, the landfill tipping fees are actually, have been reduced. There's a lot of competition in the marketplace for tipping fees. The trash at Seem Plant, Plymouth, has just been privatized, and the rates for tipping there are very low, so they felt they needed to be more competitive in their tipping fees at landfills. There is some efficiency in the fact that Mascara has the contract today, so they wouldn't need to purchase and distribute new toders to every resident. They're already there and in place, and that gave them some bit of an advantage. And they felt because they're close to home, they can be more efficient, and that's why their prices may have been lower than other bidders. So at any rate, in tonight's packet, again, is this whole bid form. All nine bids are here. Please take some time to look at them if you so chose. Consider them, maybe some discussion tonight as to how we might proceed. I don't pretend to be the financial expert. I might defer to Mr. Gestrich as opposed to myself as to how maybe he would see best to award a dollar value to the contract. But the information's all here. The bids seem good. I will point out, there appears to be an err in the Mascara bid for the pickup of television sets. I think they've got decimal place err in their bid. Everything else is $25 for computer, $25 for small appliances, and then $3 and $400 for televisions. I can have that rectified. They didn't tell me verbally that it is actually a $30 and a $40 fee as opposed to $300 and $400 fee. But that's what we have before us this evening.
So the, the average for, if you were to extend the three-year contract, the average for the last two years, two years of option would be $355.80.
Correct.
So then that's less than, all, with the $342 per year, that's less than all five years of the five-year contract?
Correct.
Okay.
It's confusing, but what I did to try and make that more clear, I added up every year of the proposed contract and divided by the contract term. So in the case of the exercising the two additional year options, we divided by five rather than three, and total value, and that's what the average price came to then per year, although the initial three years of that contract would be lower. It's kind of broken down in bid four of the, of the actual prices so you can see more clearly what that talks about.
Tim, it may be a little late in the game, and I probably should have thought of it sooner, but since we really only have one hauler now in the contract in the township, since there's no grandfather customers of other companies, is there a way that if we took on the billing and added it to the tax bill, that there's a way that we could possibly get it less than Mascara, or that the haulers could do less since they wouldn't be doing the billing?
I'm not sure how to answer that question. I can certainly ask that question. I guess, I'm wondering twofold. Does that require any more administrative time on, on the township's part, and does that incur a cost for us? And what would be the savings on Mascara's part, or allies? I don't know.
We went down that road about 15 years ago. It was a nightmare.
Yeah. That would require that we build the home, or we put it as part of your millage.
But I don't, I don't think that's what Patrick was saying. Patrick was saying fold it into tax.
Right. Fold it into your tax bill. You're paying a tax bill already, you're collecting it. Not send a separate bill, have one tax bill that's increased by the, whatever the rate of the contract is, but maybe we could see some savings in terms of what we, contract if Mascara doesn't have to, or whoever is the winning bid doesn't have to add that additional expense of billing and collecting.
The administrative costs at their house, yeah.
I mean, we already send out a tax bill. It would just be increasing it.
John, I don't know. That's not how the contract was bid. I don't know whether that would require then a complete rebidding of the project. Probably would.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, it's a new condition you're adding to it.
Yeah, I just know that now that we really truly have a single hauler in the township, that, you know, you could, you could charge theoretically, put it on our tax bill to every resident, and then maybe that would reduce the cost. Maybe the residents would see savings at that point.
What about the residents that are in condo communities because they're not under this?
We do still have a per-bag option.
It's true, but they're part of the tax base. So that gets kind of complicated.
And we did also give the option for a per-bag collection fee.
Okay.
That was another component of the bid. It's not a large component, but the, the pricing for that per-bag option actually didn't change in the Mascara bid until year five.
I'm just trying to think if there's a way that we can realize an additional savings to the resident. That's all.
Well, on another note, I was encouraged by the volume control, the, what is it, five and six options?
Yes.
I find it offensive when government says one size fits all. We're looking at it in healthcare.
Yes.
And a lot of the feedback I got from residents was that I don't need the amount of service I'm being forced to pay for, and this addresses that. It also addresses the concern that initially accompanied the whole idea of going with a single hauler, which was the amount of trucks, how often the trucks are on the street, because this would cut that in half. Because really, they're only once-a-week pickup, whether you have one or two toders. So it gets a very, very low price for the people who have minimal use of the service, and it reduces the amount of wear and tear on our roads. And I was very encouraged to see that the pricing break there is very helpful. It pushes it down to less than $314 for, or $328 for a five-year, for that once-a-week pickup with one toder.
Yes.
That, that addresses a lot of the concerns that residents brought to me, and I'm very encouraged to see that move on the list.
Tim, here's a question for you. So on bid number, option number one, three-year, once-a-week pickup, your lowest, your lowest quote for that was $313.92. What's the amount of trash you can put out?
Yeah, that is no control, so it's the same conditions we would have today, whereas if you had, you know, a toder or ten trash bags, that would all be picked up. Correct.
So it would make sense if you were comparing bid option one or two, which is the five-year, and what Don was just talking about, five and six, which limits the amount of trash that you would put out for the same price for the three-year.
Basically, correct. Correct.
Good point.
But all in all, it's good to see that the numbers are under what we're currently paying.
Saving something over.
Significantly, though.
Yes.
Okay. Well, if we have more questions?
Yeah. I think we should take some time to deliberate. I think I'd love Rich to review it and see what he thinks financially, and then hopefully next meeting, we can make a recommendation and have a resolution prepared and figure out what we want to do.
Yes, I think, I think we would like to have it on our December 18th meeting, if possible, if we're ready. Don't want to rush anything, but at that point, we certainly could take comments from residents at that point, because I know you don't have the information that we're looking at that we just got right now as well. Maybe it would be helpful, Tim, to put this summary posted on the website so that...
Certainly could do that.
I don't know if you need all the other, you know, the totals, these that go up into the millions. I don't know if you need that, but this cover sheet summary is helpful.
Yeah, it's, it's interesting as you look at those totals, though. Over the total township, the savings between the two bids is fairly significant, and the millions of dollars range for the total community between the two bids.
Okay. I'm sure Bill can help you with that, right? You have space for that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on. Item four, Announcements. It's that time of year again. Our annual community tree lighting is going to be held this Friday, December 5th, at Eagle Ville Park, 6:30 to 9:00. And I see our park and rec and public works, employees have been working very hard, so hopefully the weather cooperates, and it's not, not too chilly out there Friday night, but all residents are encouraged to attend this now annual tree lighting, which is, you know, has quite a following. It's a great event. The Caring and Sharing Holiday Food Collection is underway. Items can be dropped off at the township building out front here in the foyer during our normal business hours. And there's a tree that has stockings with items that you can, you know, purchase and donate as well. That's our, is that the Caring and Sharing tree?
Yes. Well, and then there's also, the Parks and Rec does food donations, and every year they prepare baskets to be delivered to the families in the, in the township. I know we just did that for Thanksgiving, and I think we prepared, you know, 10 baskets or so that were delivered throughout the community.
Excellent. Thank you, Patrick. Park and Recreation Board will have their meeting on December 9th at 7:00 PM here at the township building. Sewer Authority has their meeting December 10th at 7:30 in the Sewer Authority meeting, in the Sewer Authority building out front. And the Library Board will have their annual meet, monthly meeting, sorry, not annual, monthly meeting, December 15th at 7:00 PM in the library. Comments and other business. Board members have comments. Comments from the audience, please come forward.
Forgot the zoning board. But that's all right. It's not on here because the application just came in after this was printed.
Yeah, but your meeting's after the 18th.
22nd.
Yeah, so that's usually when we announce.
Three days before Christmas. It's an important one, too, because it has to do with the Trooper Road and the Ridge Corner.
Oh, the Dunkin' Donuts application?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. 22nd. Zoning Board meeting, okay?
Got that one. And then last night, we had a special meeting on Taco Bell, and the zoning board shut that through, so the planning commission will be seeing Taco Bell.
Okay.
And you know where that's going to be located. Autobahn Road and Trooper Road Corner.
At the former Texaco site, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Everything was approved from the zoning board except for one sign, and it was a three-to-two vote on that one there. So that blew through through to them. I'd like to add one question I didn't get a chance to on the trash bid. On that once-a-week pickup, will that give you the three applications? Will it give you the leaf pickup? Will it give you the, the recycling and everything else?
Tim can answer that.
Yeah, Mr. Bor, yes, it, yes, it does. So it does give you the basic services of bulk lawn and leaf and recycling, but then limits the trash pickup to, to one time a week.
One time a week. That's 313.
For the three-year contract, it's 313, correct.
For what? For the one-year contract?
For the three-year contract.
Three-year. The five years is what, 347?
Um, 328.
328?
Yes. I can give you this, I can give you this form.
That's some nice savings.
Yeah, it's quite a lot.
And the difference between the five-year and the seven-year is it's the same, right?
Yeah, the seven-year would be taking the five-year contract and exercising the two option years. That came up to a 373 average price. The first couple of years is still lower.
So basically, on, on the five-year contract, I'll be saving, instead of $100 every quarter, I'll be going $89 every quarter, which isn't bad.
Basically, correct.
For an old man, that's not too bad.
Yeah, $4 savings a month. It's about $4 savings a month.
Yeah.
Yeah. And Patrick, on the other deal, when you were talking about putting it on the, on the tax bill, I think Mr. Thomas was right. And I think you were just a weeblo sitting here when last time that was brought up, because they tried that with a, an agency in King of Prussia. And like Don said, it was a catastrophe.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of a way. I know we had at least more than one hauler because people were grandfathered in. If there's a way that we can get more of savings to the resident, I'm willing to explore it.
It'd be a little harder on the seniors, too, if you put it on their tax bill.
Okay.
We do have a lot of seniors.
I see.
On the other thing, too, I wanted to ask, but they got out of here in a hurry, but I will not ask them about the McDonald's. You know, with all these seniors driving their cars through floor shops and everything else, I just asked them if they're going to put a retaining wall where the jungle gym is, you know, where the kids bounce around and come down the slide.
Sounds like they're removing that.
They're removing that.
They're getting rid of that completely.
And have a...
Well, if they're getting rid of that, you better put up some kind of a, what they call them, like we made the...
The ballers.
The ballers in there, yeah, because, you know, quite a few little weeblos get in there and bounce around on those balls, and, and I'd hate to see a car come through there and injure one of them.
It sounds like they're going to maybe put some outdoor tables.
Yeah, tables and chairs.
Mm-hmm. But either way, it's a good suggestion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You don't go to McDonald's? Okay, do we have any other comments from the audience? We had our weeblo comment, so thank you. It gave us all a nice chuckle. Okay. Hearing nothing else, we'll call for the adjournment, and then our next meeting will be the December 18th.
Make that motion?
We have a motion? We have a second?
Aye.
All in favor, consent by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.